This is a call to the meeting in order. This is a public hearing. And we have our opening exercises. And you know, did you hear this on that one?
Yes. Please stand up. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here today tonight. Keep us within your care. Take care of our families while we're away from them. Protect themselves in all the weather, which might not be coming with quick. But no matter what we do, it's always good everything in your name and in your glory. Amen. I pledge allegiance to my country and to America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The speaker has three minutes. And you should sign in. If you haven't signed in, you can still sit there right now. And we'll be discussing ordinance for the appeal, the employment ordinance number two, the CDB four, four and twelve to number two. And then have twenty-four people number two and all four versions for the resolution. And then you will be discussing the adoration of the current special package. And the ordinance is called four two five dash one two zero two nine. And then four two five one two zero three zero one three five. Five six four five eight. Okay, and don't don't want to reach out and touch the law. But if you have.
Is there anyone that would like to speak? There's not your chance to sign in. Would you like to speak now?
Yes, I would be grateful. I'll speak now.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? If you would please come up here and sign in.
You guys will need to introduce yourselves. We're going to include all of us.
Pastor Vinnie, welcome. My name is Vinnie Devong. I'm the attorney one hint to go to. In fact, the property that is under consideration. And I heard some information from that Monday meeting with the Republican chairman that made me pause about the proposed instructions that's going there. And I'm hoping that I heard wrong. But I would like to know what they're going to do with it. Because it does what kind of construction will be going there? And how many green spaces will be left after the test?
Do you know what's going on? All right. Well, there's nothing much to learn. This is a public hearing. So that will be done. Your call, Dr. Devong? Mr. Devong Devong?
Yes.
Mr. Canterell? Mr. Cooper? Yes, Mr. Ryan? Yes, Mr. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. Motte?
Yes.
Mr. Moon? Now, where? Like John Mcnee? The regular commission of Monday, March twenty seven, and Thursday. That was again by actor of the hearing. I have opening exercises and meeting related to that. And I guess it just is a little call, but those things. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Here. Here. Employee introduction.
Anybody signing for?
Yes, we do the one month time. Now, Chair, I've got a point of order. I'm going to make a motion to move number eleven up further, perhaps after it's been considered good. So any folks that are here on that Arizona point HOA border wouldn't have to wait through our whole unit. If we could move number eleven up to make that number a new number six, that would be a nation on my heart. Just to move that up for if anyone is here on that, they wouldn't have to sit through our whole unit.
Oh, you have to vote that.
Absolutely. By making that motion, just to move that up for any folks here on that presentation, don't have to sit through everybody. Anyone want to say that? Right after the minutes. Okay. I got a second for Mr. Laster. You need a question? Your call, Dr. Devong? Mr. Brown?
Yeah.
Mr. Canterell? Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Laster?
Yes.
And the other one?
Yes.
Your call. Okay. Employee, uh, who's that?
Good evening. I'd introduce to you tonight the customer service team. Kind of the highs and the years, folks that come in to pay their sewer bill or answer questions that are calling. First of all, we update Homer. He's been here just about seven months now. He's our newest employee. He comes with a background in retail, folks in internet, managed clothing, self-storage, and banking. Next, we have Nindi Mazurk. He's been here just over two years. He comes from a software and banking background. We have Sandra McNay, who's been here just over five years. She comes to us from dealership aviation, finance, and administration. So these are folks that are kind of frontline, human questions for the business.
Can you bring them in the front so everyone can see them?
This is the team that Duane worked with on Dave Davis' background together.
I know you.
All right, thank you.
There you go. No, standing. I was talking about her coming right now. You gotta crack the whip on him. You know what? I seem like I didn't learn anything or heard anything. But I'm good. I'll bring her to the front in a minute. I've been introducing. This is Thomas Goggins, Mason Pollock. And you might know him if you've been working at the district. Now, he's been in police for a while and he didn't like making that third one. He's still graduated from recruit school. They were starting from a school, recruit school on January 10th. Graduated on March 3rd. Then the work, March 8th. And then this is Nicholas Dattlioli. He's, uh, he just started last Monday. He comes from our company, Jerry. So he works for our company, you know, kind of work for him. So, once again, Thomas Goggins, Mason Thomas is over on B ship. Mason's on B ship, executing tourist crew. And Dattlioli is on C ship, guiding the family.
Welcome, boys.
If they're not getting that thing, remember that we're fired by the same president. If a jockey walk by here, let him see you and say hello.
Traffic took me back about twenty minutes.
Whoops, kid.
I'm sorry. I'm ashamed on the social media. I've got two more on it. Okay. I, uh, I don't know if you can handle it. Okay, I make a motion for the committee to begin now. And, um, thank you. And, uh, I'm sure we've got some more. Correct. Yes, ma'am. On the special meeting, you were not an informant of the hearing. And if that may be, they give me the right to report today on the special meeting. And on the way to meetings, I just found an aside that counter number nine, Ms. Cooper recommended the term resolution as amended. It's really difficult when you don't know what the amendment was because it's not in the minutes. So this is February 13th. Well, A, the camera posted the meeting video today, and you can't hear the audio. So it's just difficult when you don't know what the amendment was. So I don't know if the officers, my consider, leave a little bit more information in the minutes so that we know what the amendment was because we just don't know that. And then on the regular commission meeting minutes, it says Cynthia Mignone's remarks are attached. They are not attached. They're not in my practice. They're not. They're not. I, I just thought Garrett Milliken. Well, that, that's Garrett Milliken. They were in the electronic, probably had a machine written. That they weren't on a real electronic version. They weren't? Yeah. I've got something from Tastina, a boy request from Garrett's attached. But if we didn't give this, yeah, that's, that's Garrett Milliken. You saw on number three A, that Cynthia Mignone's timeline is attached. It is not attached for me. Okay, you may just be able to see it very clearly. Okay, this page is Garrett Milliken. We want, this is what she gave us. Okay, this is from Garrett Milliken. Yeah, I checked with Cynthia before the meeting and she passed it out to everyone. And she said she gets it. Yeah, this is what she gave. Okay, we'll get it from her. If I can get it through the law. Okay, so that's from Garrett Milliken. So those are.
The long one thing.
Which Hank is put on now. And that's it. Okay, we're ready to ask. May this come to your mind? That's my line. Yeah, I can say I have one that is true. Thank you. That's fine. Thank you. All right, we have a lot more here? Yes, you have a lot more? Mr. Brown? Mr. Canterell? Mr. Cooper? Yes. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Laster?
Yes.
Yes. I would go, I see, I see number eleven, we have that. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. So, um, I just wanted to introduce, basically, this, this process is through section 449 of the Waysmore Revolution. And that talks about the appeal. It talks about the determination letter. And so the determination letter from the district manager is provided to the area from twenty two HOA. And then Katie Smith and the area from twenty two HOA wanted to feel the final decision of the district manager. And how this reads, it goes on the next regularly scheduled meeting. So that will be tonight. And then the commission may allow the appeal to be either have evidence. I, I provided the appeal letter to the packet and have the representative appeal. And just so you understand, the JIPS, the commission, shall deliver the decision in writing within ten days of the hearing of the appeal. So that we can see this later on in executive session. So to get legal advice, it's our table to be of the, of the, of the. Thank you for bringing up the agenda. Appreciate that. Um, I think the policy has indicated that, 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 that is on the third one. Um, the question I suggested was, has every condition of effect been applied to the part of two of that? Well, I'm not trying to sum up it because I know you did.
I know you did.
However, there are a couple things that I think want to talk about. And one, listen to yourself.
But it's not like hell, no one knew that yet because I called and asked for some clarity on the budget under two hundred and eighty. And I want to show you what I mean, so I brought some copies of the article going down in the meeting. And I imagine this format may have changed slightly. As I said, I imagine the format may have changed and been better. We wouldn't be thrilled, we wouldn't be thrilled, really difficult to determine coming into it because there's the only one in place together and I think that's the decision going there to some of the services that own my government, that's mine. And moreover, the bill is not broken down either by women's or by face rate. So for many years, the custom say that the general public's sources of money were charged with, but we had no way of knowing that we would be in charge there. And so, I, you know, I wonder, I was for the sake of other people to maybe be confused about what they're being charged for for the general public, general public, general public. I think that the bill should have made clearly more of a breakdown of what, actually what people are going to trust. I think that's an important improvement that general public agencies might want to consider. But I don't want to have all the facts of the year, the time to read them and the idea that we should not always have to do. And quite frankly, we're here to ask to replace something that was purposely easier, that has in fact been used for a lot of twenty years. And that's not in itself needed to replace. The only thing that compels us to consider replacing it is the charge that the general public sources of is putting on a system on which missing the executive entirely, we have line to mention that all of that. And as I said earlier, in the window, that's how much water goes. So it seems to me that this is an opportunity for the public services to say, I'm going to make people make a bunch of changes, but new equipment, but new, and new eyes and I must say, they've been, they're changing things, a real good resource for, and we consider what we might be forced to do. And we initially thought that the project would want to be more than fifty thousand dollars to get this changed. However, it looks like we're going to have to press it because the new policy rules are not on that, it's probably going to cost about twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. But still, we, we, we stated that not even legally, but for the best, if I heard sources that would be using this resource to monitor this one, that's not a problem at all except for the way that it's presented. So I'm asking you to think that the fascinating part is that we're going to need to, that we started our assessment for whether we could do it. I want to say one more thing, and this is, this is what I found out today. And I think there is probably something that people all are going to find out about now, and that is that our type of machines for that for third, you know, that's one can be seen. And I think probably given the level I'm at and all of our community fabric, that people all are going to find that they're seeing the communities in their, in their insurance. I just think that if you, I'm not saying we have the ability to prove them, and if you must target in a way that you can, you will have to figure this out. But it would seem that in clients where there are the violence present and a number of these laws, we should pay attention to what might serve best served, the community best served.
Can I ask, I have a question about the bill that you wanted, and this was about two thousand and nineteen, approximately five hundred dollars, that which all back then have been divided between you and your boss?
Oh, two thousand and nineteen, okay. In two thousand and nineteen, we fought for a whole community, we paid for it. It wasn't until I believe, I couldn't, couldn't, that we found out that we were not moving forward. We were, and our bills were high, but they didn't work the rational time.
May I ask you what your average bill was back in the current term before the change?
Which I could say, I don't think I really can say. When we started, when we found out that we had families, when we started being charged with community, was exactly that the commission put in the really high charges for the two inch meter. I'm sorry, I don't know the history and whatever y'all think. Pardon me, what, what you should go right into? The base rate is fourteen hundred and forty, fourteen hundred and forty dollars a month. That's before usage. And usage, usage, I believe, is billed from July.
Then mentioned.
Yeah, it's been probably adequate in some, we don't have a special irrigation backlog system and all of that, so one is definitely one others who go up. I would say that during the year, as much as people do, they're going to think, and having those, the development, most of those people are all like me, they're retired, they don't have children, they're doing all that sort of thing. So I don't have one, is it you, the others, is it them, that they're all what, like me?
Can I ask you if you could feature on, does something request for the corner?
I have not. The first time that I've said that I've been on the board with us, I was at the last meeting, and they helped me do a lot of, basically what I was asking for was partial. And so, when they're going through the two inch meter and above, we learned that the services are having to report on a number of rules that aren't really the policy in this issue, so that was, that was the effect. And I'm saying that under such a long law, the, the basis for this law, you're going to actually, actually fix that, sorry. I just, we, we believe that there may be other businesses that help this year. And it seems to me that, as I said before, we are being charged excessive base rates for usage that's minimal, and that to be your critical minutes. We have to be able to, you know.
I have a question, you know, if you have a, if you're going to go and game on, what actually, maybe you can elaborate on what I don't know, but it's going down, but it uses per day?
So we both agree a lot in twenty nineteen, obviously, but it's going to show the usage, the CCF, the CCF, uh, new CCF, new CCF is quantity of water, so that shows the volume factor, and then the rest is based on weight, based on.
So this is something that is printed, and there's a line, and a board open on it, and you took up the money?
Right, yeah, each one details out the pain rate as well as the usage. The CCF, the F word, usage, the volume factor. There you see the metering previous and the metering current, that's different is CCF.
Are you capable of, on whom, like some of the, I mean, so is it companies where they actually, so they're paying you to use it, is that something of the year yet, or not?
I got, I, I think it's, it's, I mean, it was hard for, you know, the records on many students that are, I'm thinking, a hundred, a couple of people, they were making kind of, about that. If the state were to, was it there, we would have a lot of, if anyone, we would have a lot of, that they're, I believe, for example, I live across the.
So we, we provided all the building that's been, back in twenty fifteen.
Yes, we did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a question. I have to, this, through the subsurface utility engineering, that we services for positive, that's, you know.
So at the regular meeting on the twelfth of December, twenty twenty-two, the commission previously approved a soft causality to the Harvey New Harborview redundant force main project, so the subsurface utility engineering services from E S T is required project planning component deformed in accordance with standards set forth by a state of all regard. For the most recent, C W S force main writer lends support to continued planning efforts for the redundant force main project, conducted in partnership with J I T S D and C W S. So I'm happy to report that J I T S D, C W S crews successfully implemented the diversion, and that is diverting from Station sixty-one of C W S to the hard force main carrying that across from Harborview over to Plum Island. So we have been able to help them divert. I can tell you that that level of partnership would not have been possible for the end of the day. And so, the C W S force main worry shows we heard anything needed on this project because it's not a matter of if, but when, the J I T S D will need to divert wastewater flow using the new redundant force main in order to repair the existing J I T S D force main. The repair needed will be, will be lining the current force main with resin, meaning that the wastewater flow will need a different path while the repair is being made. And the goal is to proactively plan and implement redundant force main project so that the J I T S D does not wait until there is a much more costly emergency repair that involves future sanitary overflow now. So I'm happy to report that J I T S D is working with C W S to divert wastewater flow from James Island to Plum Island, and the legal teams are working through, as of searches and preparation of easements for the redundant Harborview force main project, which is done with C W S. So tonight, we seek your motion to a court of due service.
I'd like to make a motion for a discussion. Doctor. I've got, may I ask a question? You know, the same where the Harborview red force main is going to take, and we put in this different to that. This is on the forty, you know, and, you know, we've already talked about doing this and this for us, you all, you all, and the commission gave a thumbs up when the nonprofit involved, which you do get red, and put up force main project. But if something happens to that funding, do you think anything like saying this could happen? I mean, are we, I mean, is that, what can I, I don't know.
Right, so then, you know, we still have Kyle and Kel, our lobbyists swing for defenses in Columbia as far as if it does not skip, then non-recovery of the funding, like we're going to exhaust resources, but all the while, we have to prepare for this because, say, some of the projects fall through and they're awarded and then they can't get going or get crashing, you know, we can go back to the R I A and essentially say, hey, look, we got this project, it's shovel ready, give us the funding, and we got to go. The problem then is your permitting thing, so it's such a lengthy process. Bob George can give you a fifteen-minute dissertation as far as the different level of permitting, but you got Army Corps then here involved, you got D H A involved, L S R, so there's different levels that we have to get through the title search and be easier. And everything to prepare for, it's only going to be a couple weeks to actually directionally grill, but it's years to get to that meet.
Are these one of the last residents that we need to use much from, or where are the best to use much from?
All through the march. So Bob George and, yeah, Bob George and Tim, Muller, they've been going through, he sat down in Congress with the maps and, you know, he knows who's part of that, and that's doing title searches, trying to get through that process so we can track us easier.
And this, if you know, it's going to be good for you. They're not once a thing. They are, but the person is going to be that much. And it doesn't involve lining the block, lining the floor. No, no, it's going to be random.
So right now, you have two pipes, and those two pipes are going from Harborview, James Island, to Plum Island. B W S's force main puts one line, for diverting flow, we have one line, one artery going from James Island to Plum Island. We need a third because B W S's line is older than our line, and our line is from nineteen ninety-six, and this is not just a line, it's a force main under pressure. And right now, if that line, if we have a problem, we can't bypass that enough. We need to have a third line and eventually shut down the current line to divert flow, and then line the old line, and then we have redundancy and cross connections with C W S that we have three lines, and we can divert all of it. So we're trying to partner through this case study.
Would you imagine that with the, that because you are such a relationship that has made things a lot easier because in the past, we have been held that, relationships weren't together. So since you've gone to here, we've built a relationship with people who would need to look at us and care. So after meeting him from five years, I think, oh, you left, but you know that Dave has been a blessing to this area. People are going relationships, just that.
I'm not going, I'm not going. This engineering will, throughout the past, come aboard, ordered for to undermine the crabs and officials, won't even matter what's going on. And it will not, instead of the large tracks or anything like that, will be probably be following one year, and be following that, and be following there, getting the tunnels. So, you know, I just wanted to ensure that anybody else is not.
Right, I mean, thank you so much for, because this is the environmental impact that I'm going to be worried about, and this large company that we're bringing on board has done a project at Seaport Island, so I'm impressed that they have environmental engineers, as part of this project test, and I'm considering some of the environmental impact that I.
Well, just like, I'm also going to know them all, although, oh, I don't remember the, I don't know the size, but it could be twenty-four.
Thank you.
First of all.
Is your boss, is that from home? No, okay, so, C W S is repairing their force main so that they can get that back operationally. That is an undertaking. And, I mean, you've been over there, you've seen the cars and everything they have over there, that's not a quick thing. And so, that, that's diverting. We had to locate and exercise and make sure that all was balanced, so those cross connections, we had to repair that. Those were not, those were not turned for a while because there was no cooperation, okay? We need a cooperation for emergency like this, and we want to build on that, but that is not going to, that's not going to go away until they have that force main completely operational again. Well, once their force main is repaired, right? And then a third, because both of them are open, and they need repair.
Oh, you have your local, Mr. Raza?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I am pleased all the way to use the medical expertise and Aequip's better for the ten and financial.
All right, so the members of the commission will remember that this request is replacing a camera truck from nineteen ninety-nine, and a real house put of a camera van in the video, and I can tell you that the technology has improved tremendously since nineteen ninety-nine. Aequip's camera technology now seamlessly integrates with the district's P I S system. So the video from the camera van is a real house put in this system, and it can be stored and in the district's P I S and tagged with specific asset in the utility system. We don't have that right now. And the same thing, it can be lined from manhole. So the district demoed three vans from different companies that provide camera van packages with the associated technology. Aequip has the lowest cost for the district's required specification, also the closest vendor located in Rockville, South Carolina. And Aequip offers a limer program for camera vans, if a major repair is needed, they can get the limer. The letter of commitment, Aequip aligns with the district's capital lease, resolution later on the agenda, and once the letter of financial commitment is sent to Aequip, we'll be able to schedule the demonstration for the wastewater committee, the fifth of June, where Aequip is deploying a demoed camera van so the commission can get an eye on this technology to allow the district to better proactively identify problems that need to be repaired instead of reacting to problems that they lie underground in the wastewater system. So a camera truck and back truck kind of work tandem, that once you stop the problem out, then you camera in, try to see what that problem was, and see what, what we can get done to underground, but you don't want to think, you're not repairing on the software. So this goes down into the pipe, they're very able to see that.
I would love. I see here with the training, we are offering complimentary forty dollars, it's pretty much.
Right. So do you remember Kevin Ron from the last meeting, the Assistant Director of Wastewater Services, who's just in bathing? He's been working with the camera truck, and now stepped out for the camera van, and he's very excited to get something down into the system that comes with the P I S.
That's a great one, mind me also, would you back it up?
Yeah, to back it up, addressing.
They're asking, they see that you asked them to be part of.
No.
It's multiple.
They're not part of the call.
Okay, because you asked them to.
Yeah.
So, like, connected P I S, so you're going on there, on a, the P I S, one of the doctors that I heard, so people did in the hole, exactly what we're doing. So can, take a motion and I might stop you there?
Yes.
And don't.
Don't I got to?
Okay, may I? Do you want to? All right, your call, please. Mr. Raza?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, now it's about the ways and means for the implementation. Force one is a table, who is one to be treated, and one is second reading.
So this is the second reading, proposal document associated with the public hearing from earlier this evening, the only way to deal with ordinance without order. So the relevant next thing on the agenda is a simple resolution to replace the old procurement ordinance.
I make a moment, but may I throw, I've been.
Can I make a question?
Yes. I, I can't support us to do this and change it. I've looked at it over and over again, and I'm just going to agree with those, it's contentious, it's difficult, and we don't have videos to watch, or a minute to complete with a minute to speak now, and I, I wrote the, the two versions, I, I mean, I can't feel anything unless I have somebody to be close to. And I don't support what we call the replacer, and I don't need to reflect the portion on the work of these workers that we discussed last week, so, I can't.
This might just be the field of all the.
You can't support saying that we have something to replace. Make my assumption, the third, the board on the field of the treatment ordinance, and certainly the experiment resolution will be the first of the action.
So we're going to, so we're going to first approve the ordinance from the Department of General, and I think the vote's all over.
So, what do you, we're going to go on any of these? That would be a second, we're going to make a change. I'm trying to, I'm trying to, you got it?
It comes from a, yes.
Right. What's very good? Like you have been, somebody has been, Carol, the manager, the best picture, the suppose? Yes. I have heard of that, okay? I don't know if the commission, that was going to get around the general, when the district let us know they were buying that you do. I don't know if we bought the N P before, maybe it was with our department, but if they're not, but what is in the present, the current ordinance, is that they just let us know when they have an emergency project. I have no issue with anything that is in a budget, that we have voted for, but this has not been changed to what we discussed in one of the two, what can we say? And what you provide for us does not include that. The change that we agreed to at the last Ways and Means Committee is simply doesn't. So if it's not what the commission asked for, I don't like what we know from a purchase over twenty-five thousand dollars if an emergency is made, twenty-five thousand dollars in one month, and the present, the current ordinance, just question, let us know. It's like we did over Christmas, right? We said, listen, you got to write down what you want here, we can't pass that, because it's going to be needed, and think before, let's go ahead and do it now. And, you know, I don't think it's a special meeting, but you just let us know. And so I think that that's reasonable, to let us know, and then for a fifty thousand dollar purchase, it's one clue for that, or for, you know, whatever was in there that is changed, you know? So that's all I have on it, thank you.
I thought, I thought the district manager said two bucks for fifty thousand dollars without coming to us. Going to get a single fifty thousand, he said he has to come to us. And I understand.
Yeah, it was a twenty-five thousand.
No, that he let us know. Um, it was fifty thousand that the manager was able to approve fifty thousand dollars, if anything over fifty thousand, he has to come. If anything over fifty thousand, he has to come to us. But that was in the order, so. Something is one part of you.
All right, um, let's do a little talk there.
So you want to feel the order and.
Correct. But I should have been with one thing. One version, yeah.
Mr. Ronald, how?
Yes. Yes.
Brian?
Oh.
Why?
Yes.
No.
Yes. We don't see the first of the castle's revolution, of course, we want.
So members of the commission will notice that it's with very similar language to the regulation of twenty twenty-one oh oh one. That was from March of twenty twenty-one, two years ago. The list approved by the commission, the district bond council, the board of the district's financial advisors, published in our tweet. And the citizens, along with the banks, provide the most favorable rates and terms. So if the bond council aren't slim, vote slim here this evening to follow up. Meanwhile, through a thorough explanation last Monday, the twenty of March, the waiting means the main.
So guys, we did talk about it last week, I like spending every one day. The approval to get thirty-nine on the rise of three point two million dollar capital project, if the capital proof is not involved in that, that would be. They will have to do, we have to spin through a capital lease process in twenty twenty-one. The way they all work, it's appropriated the base, the answer being that they always make payments on the obligation, the next report is nothing to make that. These various capital provision items that you have. The only appropriate thing to make is not technically that, like you've got foreign law. There's a whole litany of banks, the type of borrowing, the number is high enough, the credit quality, the investment, going down to the second. Pretty strong result as a result of this, especially now with all kinds of rocky banking environment right now. With very large, not flying the volume, rushing volume, instead of initial credits, the good standard, you know, the president doing maintenance. For simple certain needs, the pretty easy to pay this, and you guys do pretty much all the time. So it was that again, really robust proposal, and so tonight, through this action, it's also all related to universal for underwriting. So that is, that is required, that all of this is in it as well. Plan to be able to get approval, which is mighty, but that's part of the banking environment, and to get closer to the early nade, second mortgage available, or in writing.
I make a motion to approve the capital lease, but we just trust them.
I don't know, but um, I know, um, but that way they can just say, you can add how it's that.
It certainly does, and so there's benefit that's on here, benefit to PDA, it works out in life. If you borrow money, that is tax, that's a state tax, you know, meaning if you entertain, if you pay that, the same issue takes in the user, right? You don't have to do that. And so today, in order to compact that, banks will report in thirty thousand, that's right, if they're reduced to four one, we shouldn't have that. So the roadmap is, so if they receive the bank pay a little more than certain income tax on immigrants, on the better, on the better C. It's a twenty percent discount on the tax for. The roadmap is, we get, uh, immigrants five percent, the tax for all the particular drivers, five percent. Use, bless all the people who are in the prison during the war, the government, the twenty percent discount, that's seventy percent. Back to seeing curd and concerns about district rental, market economy, if there are even more high quality, instead of saying, hey, alert that. Or would it maybe be more money for high quality? So there's so many would be somewhere in the neighborhood, you're just, uh, absolutely, you're not getting some, but that's a happy business, we. But the way you know, um, as a director of that, to have that, the banks, they don't want to make a lot of foreign money, that's not by federal government. The money that they borrow, it won't be happy to live, because they should have seen what they're getting at the rates. Um, whether it's a better price than last week, possibly, but it all had, so the bank would collapse. And then you see a whole lot of, um, production in the market, and so the shortage for your, yes, it affects us. But different banking, the pricing, that's why we sent out all of them to do that, obviously. When the crazy thing is excellent, but that is already great, four hundred and thirty-five basis points in the last month. So when you're out there two years ago, whereas this four interface was officially at the actual bottom of the market. Now, if it's a little bit backed up, it's going to break some of the market, but it's going to be substantially higher than what we're going to want. But so that's, that is, that's from, that is one of the problems there. Now, making the fourth block, the setting time, that is, if you're going to go out borrowing money, and you want to use it all, you know, it's all included in the investment. And by placing an emergency investment, if it were, you get all their five, you know, at the whole of that, it's a very small. How is it, how is it there, there's a safe decision, actually, partly because of that, why do they, it is really very low.
My question. Do you have a shortfall in our current budget, that is going to help with the investment, is any of this things suitable operation? Okay, I'm here for the last one. I just want to bring the commission's attention to the PDA here, because there aren't, uh, the list, the equipment and vehicles, there aren't any price caps there. That was, I mean, we've got today, and the past, we've got that information. But, um, I also wanted, like, don't ever have to ask to list about the breathing apparatuses. And even things, you know, we talked about this, because I was curious, about fifty costing six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And, you know, just to a simple figure, you know, I'd call when we could get fifteen for twenty, twenty-five thousand versus two hundred and fifty thousand for six hundred and fifty thousand. So now we can find, if you're giving some information about that, that's part of the capital lease. I mean, it's.
So when you see the honeywell, correct?
I mean, there's.
Right, right, party.
Right, fair. Where? Okay, I mean.
So this is the air pack, when you, when you see a fireman going into a fire, this is the oxygen they have, okay? This is very important, providing fire protective services. And so the honeywell units are no longer even serviceable. We, we are animalizing units to be able to repair them. And so you don't want to send a fireman correct into a fire with something that is, uh, as an opportunity even fail. And so we're, we're past the useful life of that. And so when we started this project, well over eighteen months ago, the fire department brought in several different makes and models. And then they put together a team, and Italian chief pastor helped do the grading, where different, um, ships, tried different units. So they knew getting consensus, that they knew they had to replace the units. So the fire department actually put on the make it model that we're trying to get.
But there's a twenty, twelve thousand, uh, I'm talking about the. Your problem was twelve thousand weeks for how many days?
I have information here from, uh, January first, twenty twenty-one, where we got a price. From Reinhardt in North Carolina, for Scott SDBA, the gold price, January one, two thousand twenty-one, nine thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. That price is gone, I cannot tell you exactly what it is. But on the, um, AFG grant, we identified for, um, two thousand twenty-one, we put in for forty-six SDBAs at a suggesting price of twelve thousand five hundred feet. We have not heard from that grant yet. So with twenty twenty-one, we submitted. In October twenty twenty-two, we came to y'all and we said, hey, our stuff's not serviceable anymore. These people that come out and do the annual testing, this is the last year. They're not coming out to see us no more. Our equipment is unserviceable, so we have to get these SDBAs replaced immediately. Because we cannot, they go through an annual testing to make sure they operate efficiently, and they will not come to see us. So. So we put in over forty-six in that grant. Again, this February, February ninth, we put in for the AFG grant once again, for forty-six air packs. At a higher price than what we're living there for the twenty-one, because we're two years later, first, and we actually put in for more money for this AFG grant president.
How many minutes are the minutes of digital?
That is up in the air, but it's suggested thirty minutes, but it's based on user, lots of user, how much work they're doing, thirty minutes. They will be here forty-five, but thirty.
Okay, I have my hand up, and I'm.
Um, as chairman of the fire department, I think that these firemen just stay alive every day. I don't want to hear nothing, I want them to have the best of equipment, because they like to tend on the person. So let's not put hand, talk about how much it's gonna cost, life comes, people cost, thank you.
I want to make clear that, um, I realize that there's a dire importance, you know, bringing up, or that. What I'm concerned about is six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and I just that, you know, what they are per one, what they cost, what they cost in Florida, and everything else. So that was my question, is that, you know, can we get a better deal?
I think they are, I don't understand it. I would, they don't have, I don't understand it, but that's the price, I don't know if it's even more valid, but, um, that's the price. You are, no, we have to pay, and, um, I'd like to, um, ask, with the given grant, we don't have to borrow the money, but we're in harm's way of doing that.
Right, so just like, just like Lauren said, if we don't need our visits, then we don't have to use the money. However, we need to give these orders, because if we don't get them serviced, and we have air packs that are not annually inspected, and one fails in duty, if you fly a really good distance, you don't want to have that liability. You want to provide firemen that they need to do that.
When you go out and you.
So we're in a state on a front, with the SDBAs.
There are.
So we use a big contract, and you have to make.
May I ask? David, you couldn't come back and check in with us on this?
Yes, so for example, the, Lauren's helping with their PDA computers, and they have to give us the latter truck by December of twenty twenty-three, for the almost money. So they're gonna make sure that we have the latter truck. Um, we help them with that, because it's such a long deep time. And, um, same thing, we're, it's around the same time that we're sort of taking international dump truck, and auto car side loader, and get those. Would love for the commissioners come down and see our new truck, um, trucks and field, and understand what they is. Right, before they start picking up cars. So.
And, you know, that side loader too, because Vegas and Las Vegas, and the regular plant, that nobody know that. And you gotta take a lot faster. Okay, so is there anything on this?
Yes. Yes.
Brown, Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Henshaw?
Yes.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes. Yes.
No, with the copy on, that I worry that we're storing weight to the tree that we can't pay that.
Yes. All right. Information a lot. I want to hear about, I don't think you're in the pro architect, or fire station, you know, it's a federal policy.
I see your comments about the importance of, like, taking equipment to the fire station, including firefighters. I'm arguing that the fire station is important to the equipment, and that, and planning. You've been working on the project now for years. All of you had two different phases. First phase was a. Destination phase, we did a conceptual design on the site to look at an existing station on the site and to make a new compliance, the current standards of fire station work on that site versus, um, the larger area of the base of the property. That resulted in several options that were drawn to me, and it's kind of possible as well. The second phase, which we did is to do a survey on the site and other, um, site investigations. That's the conclusion, so we're here today for understanding, um, the true of the, the, uh, middle remains for the design phase, for the remainder of the work to include the demolition of the fire station and construction of the. And in your hat, are the middle side provided in the district. They talked about how it would work. Traditional architectural services are sort of divided into the basic services, and then supplemental services. Basic services include architectures, structural engineering, mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineering. And then supplemental services are the other types of investigations and engineering that is, it's based on specific products. For instance, hazard clearance testing, dive and location, that in order to model that patient, you can say, um, at that, it's like, you can maybe expect it to be, um, additionally, other going on the site, it needs to remove as part of third option, so to give any, the M D survey for hazard clearance. Uh, to the land clearing and permitting, it's not a possibility on the site as well. As this is something that will focus, things like management architecture, process, and then all those are thrown down. Side in the middle, local device side, this is, we talked about artwork during construction. You don't just design a building, actually, that I'm on the site while it's being built. Um, I know this is, looking at a delivery net on, like, contractors to seeing that risk. It's a little different, saying, just designing it, sitting it, and whether it's going to do. Lowest amount to contractors to see no risk, you're actually collecting the contractor while it's going to be building. And you're gonna be surprised, you're, 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 for the benefits of that process, that will move in, that team at work. To give you a better product, and give you more information about where the project is, and then to appoint, on call. Um, we're not doing, that, you know, engineering, just remove items, specifically because of cost variables, you need contractors, the best room, design. And try to come out and drop them, and pick them, and have the benefit of the process, and services, you've got building services while they're doing, on, more team effort. Um, you know, eliminate all the adversary relationships, a lot of times, especially public task. All that information is provided, it's in the package. From a fee perspective, I'll tell you that I provided today, and I think it's a package, something in time. These charts that allow us to sort of make where our services should be based on the total cost of the building. Um, our figure is that, we, we've got a top ninety dollars bill. Fifty seven hundred square feet. At eight hundred and seventy-five dollars worth of. I'll tell you, we are just finishing. I'll tell you, we are just finishing back along in twenty-two, thirty, and the United States, either the United States is fifty-four hundred, five hundred square feet. Very similar, five hundred. Kind of much size for remote, from Edison and it's been, it's difficult, um, that's a flat again, quite, they're actually going to have a low, low bid project, but, um, it's over a hundred million dollars. These are not unusual costs, because the end of enforcement of what construction costs are in our area at this point. Um, I didn't mention we do an essential facility defined by the United States Building Service. Um, probably the public service facility and the construction partners have heightened uh, design requirements, the structure, the size, the length. Um, we also are looking at, um, the building within the design, the footwear, the building, things like that. Um, again, all the, the goal of meeting the budget based on the conceptual layout that you fire and design at this point. Certainly not in the final, we haven't really started the schematic design, it's been successful. You have to define a program and define basically what the case needs, or our rendering, or provide the fallback. Not in the final, it's, it's certainly a team um, working with the district and the fire department, um, making to define the concrete, to, 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 to the more important, the need to use the fire, provide them with the state, the building with the elements and components that the standard operational fire station has.
So Steve and Ryan, we've been meeting with them several times since the last time they presented. And so they've been very helpful with us. We have drafted a new, um, procurement resolution, and that allows construction manager at risk to have vital option, to procure construction services. So all the while, we've been teaming up to be able to put an R F Q together associated with onboarding of an construction manager at risk. They have, uh, legal's vetted, uh, R C A is vetted, and we're prepared now that this has been approved to go out, uh, post tomorrow on S C B O as far as construction manager at risk. And we hope to be able to come back uh, the twenty-fourth April, the next regular press meeting and provide you with a recommendation on C M at risk onboard, so that they can start working with R C A. I mean, right now, there's four hundred electrical components and a mechanism.
My, my, I have to ask, other factors in that, that the equipment, that if you're standing locally for a new design building and once it's done, it's a vital contract. The team at risk, you're able to, um, let various procurement or various packages pass through it. Right now, as Dave mentioned, electrical gear, um, glass, uh, mechanical equipment. It's over a year to order a piece of equipment. So if you wait to order that and if you get a contract up for it, you're gonna build part of the building and then you're gonna wait a month until your equipment is available and you're putting the building. Team at risk allows us to order, put in a term. We are able to do the remainder, you get that equipment signed, put in a plan, done through the plan, order that equipment, and that's new time to be accommodated to where you don't have a deadline to just go and just sit there waiting for an accident or waiting for a lot of things.
I got a question.
Well, it's a question.
Um, I have, can I, I think this is a question. I don't, if, if, if I have my hands up, I've got something that you say. I'm happy to know that, um, we have the contractor and the office working together. And I think we need to mention that because when we built Station One, it was a zoo. But now we have a team and, and, and we're saving money. So these are the kind of information that we need to get out to the public. Let them know that we are doing things correctly. So, um, that's all I got to say.
And so, and so this, these fees are already baked in here with the fiscal year twenty-four appropriation.
Yes.
Okay, and so by voting for the budget, um, net meaning the regular meeting equal twenty-four, we will be able to move forward with this proposal for the starting of the appropriation.
This is good, my question, I just want to know.
And so they're also here to help you understand, like, we will be evaluating, R C A will help evaluate C M's at risk when we get those, uh, proposals, the qualifications back along the Fox shore. So both the civil engineer and the architect, as well as the district and the fire department can sit down and say, okay, based on this, how many fire stations have they built? How many fire stations in Low Country have they built? You know, who do we know that they built the station for that we can call and say, you know, did they do a good job? And we're gonna get it from you. And that helps me.
Um, can I ask you, is Bob George's and Mary's station part of the four hundred and seventy thousand? Okay, that's, that's good one. So four hundred and seventy thousand. So what you're interpreting on when this contract gets executed, or this is under the original contract and you got another staff?
It's under the original contract. I'm saying we find a contract that's full thirty-two, but we understood that it was a statement that it did.
And have you, does it have any problem waiting in for a measure of half days?
Uh, I'm ready to walk. Well, I'm ready to get started. We're ready to get started. We're not waiting on that. You know, we understood, uh, certainly.
Well, we have a community meeting. It's designed in late April.
Sure.
And then we, um, looked at our budget for determination and it's very kind of helpful.
David, very upfront before, when you were pursuing this job, did you, you walked, you got a lot of skill, a lot of issues with C S B on the site?
Well, Steve, you took this together to demolish the dinner process. So what, you know, I think we need, obviously, I think we have that force in executive session line. So I think this is a legal matter. We have to wait till executive session to talk about that. But I would, you know, that in a kind of imminent, imminent domain feature of a client, that hopefully we can discuss that in executive session, that we can be looking at on this. That is concerning. Because this is obviously looking at the bigger fire station taking those parts.
Wow, does this look like someone else?
Yeah, there's, that's where, for, for, as a designer, for, for those, those, that, 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 doesn't violate that whole brand, that's part of our design.
This is a base station, you're pretty good. What do you think, what do you call it? Basically, the base station needs to be there and the business doesn't call.
Well, I, I remember the, the bigger issue is not the classification, but, you know, a fire department, for humanity, trying to, oil, trying to fire department, you mentioned, certainly when they're returning to the station that on, that on early, maybe to the community, to say, maybe, so the site is more than just a building, all of the other many, that way. And that, unfortunately, takes, it needs to come out of land. There's certain, you're, you're, offering without taking in, you don't have a drive to take, it's a, it's a very difficult, um, dynamic. That amounts to providing the whole of air shots to their full proximity.
Now, I just wanted to clear that my complication is not anything to be done with. People usually design some of the most beautiful buildings and stations and tall buildings in the Low Country. And the fight, you know, it's just absolutely the worst part of it all. And I probably be like, look, he's cool. You know, I'm simply worried about a teenager called the wrong guy.
So we have to tie off our section of the work, but.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Update on the four main locations, the five, the four pump stations, number eight, no.
Matt Scherr with the question, maybe after I have ten and we've had a five minute break, we'll do the other ten.
No, no, we're fine. We've got two more seconds. You guys remember from last Monday night, we had a, uh, what I thought was gonna be an emergency purchase, and we got it back before. And so Joe has an update, been working with legal, been working with Fox, and he's been very active trying to get it.
Yeah, so, um, originally, we thought we were gonna prepare with sixty thousand dollars for the four main location. Um, I had our engineer reach out to another contractor that thought that number was a little high. We got the new number for thirty-five thousand, which makes way more sense. Um, I met with, uh, Bob George down there with, uh, Bob Tiger, who's a project engineer for the Bryant Building. Um, we went over where our new ones go. They're going to hear that out. They're giving us a, um, triangular improvement behind the dumpster pad to place on top of our four main. And this will give us access for maintenance with a freight truck, um, a hump truck. It's not ideal, pretty tight, but it's better than what we had. We're going to be locating the four main outside of the station in terms of the front, where it goes now. And it's gonna come out, go down, and directly help us to follow it through our, uh, tent to be, our, that.
On the side. Who does the top of that?
No, so, uh, back in the, the day, uh, there was a, right? And there was an existing ten foot basement that backed on the side originally. When it happened, probably about thirty years ago, they built new C S B. And the guys who, women or people who own, uh, that property had a handshake, grew with C S B. You got a comment anytime, if you wanted to fight through a parking lot, no problem, go with that after. They sold the property. Um, myself and Jeff Code had a meeting back in August with the contractor. It was our thing that nothing was gonna be placed in front of or on top of our four main. Um, they were supposed to do a, uh, a S U locate, which you are now familiar with, uh, which they did not. And it was supposed to let us know if, um, any structure were ever built on our four main, which they were, but they didn't let us know. So Gason, um, our inspector, went out there one day and called me up and said, hey, we got a problem. So I took her right out there. I called in our own S U locate and found that our four main range is wrecked underneath that dumpster pad that was thousands of pounds put in, pulled together. So if they put any more weight on that, we were looking at how sensitive that is.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Can I sit back for a second? Okay, you can take that. I have a little quick here. I've got some cookies. Shall I look there?
Right, you know what, I called them.
I have number ten. Update on intergovernmental painting project on the avenue of, of fire station.
All right, so what you have in, uh, your packet is the M O A with the county. And so this is to participate within the intergovernmental painting project that we discussed the Ways and Means Committee, uh, last, um, Monday. And so what you have in there is basically, um, an intergovernmental agreement that we will reimburse the county if we go ahead with the project, under fifty thousand dollars. We have found it in the fire department budget, so we're able to move forward. And what they have in the pretty picture at the end with the orange and blue, they had that clipped. But that was the only thing that was different. Um, in the very back for, uh, after, you have the M O A, the language. Then you have this orange and blue, okay? It's right on, roll on both. So the orange track is the P S B. They have it as Charleston and the blue is what it should be. Same thing for the other one. We own, and you see half of that Quinton Avenue in there. So they have E for in front. Um, Jeff has, uh, you know, reached out to the county attorney. I have reached out to, uh, the city, uh, Public Works as far as starting the process. Hey, we wanna do this? We don't want you to come back in five years. What's the process for us to give this to you? Because we don't do road. And so, um, we're working on that process at this point. But, um, yeah, we, uh, Sanders is jumping up a bit, be able to get through. And I wanted to be able to show the commission, hey, this is the M O A, this is what we're doing. We're moving forward.
Any questions on that?
So I'm thinking, uh, the first question, you're the orange or the blue?
We are the blue, both of those, and they should have it the legend different.
Right.
So the legend should say that the P S B owns within that orange. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you for that update. And, um, yes, we need to probably get rid of that. Um, and skip the, uh, number eleven, row number twelve. Then we're, this would manage to the board.
This is gonna be a very quick report. We got other things, okay? So on here, you'll see the roll-up. The roll-up is the cost center breakdown for revenue and expenditures. And I'm pleased to tell you, the general fund revenue is at seventy percent. So we're at the target. You take eight months through the fiscal year, divide by twelve, that's sixty-seven percent as far as target going down. You've got seventy percent of the revenue collected for the general fund revenue, seven million out of almost ten. Then you go right below there. And the total general fund expenditures were right below target at sixty-four point one four percent as far as the six point, six million three hundred ninety-five thousand as the nine million nine hundred seventy-one thousand. So we're just below target on the general fund. Um, I want to remind everybody, we have the community meeting Monday, the seventeenth of April, fire station number two. We've got some signs printed up. Uh, we're gonna get those out there at the intersection, so we'll be able to, um, have a good showing for that public meeting. Uh, followed by, the public hearing is scheduled for the twenty-fourth of April, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty. That'll be the public hearing with the, uh, regular permission meeting, uh, immediately following. So in addition to the budget resolution, the annual fiscal year twenty-fourth budget resolution, we hope to bring back to you a recommended C M at risk for the twenty-fourth of April. As far as the skip grant, I'm gonna tell you that the, um, R I A intends to, uh, move very quickly from when the Senate approves by one hundred eighty-six conditional million dollars to fund the skip grant projects. Not be a very long time for the award, uh, of those projects. The second of May, we already have it on the books that if we're awarded a skip grant, we have to go to the Columbia Convention Center with all the other recipients. And we have a editorial on what to expect with that. So, um, we are very hopeful that by the seventeenth, the April I can come to you and say, if we got one. And that.
But what's the date of the one?
No, that's what I hope, that's what, at that community meeting, that's what I hope to be able to tell you, that we got funded or we didn't. So, uh, if not, we'll hear that. I really hope, they know. Um, they picked a bad time to put it in front of the General Assembly, and there's certain rates going on, and they're out of session, and now we're back, and they're trying to slam five hundred eighty-six million through because they don't want to award just nine hundred million because they want only one round of valiating. First, the people that don't get awarded the funding, they want it all together at once.
Okay, then David will skip, uh, the four main, the four spare, the roll-up, the written petition. I think we got some data. Can we have anyone that signed you?
Yes.
Can you please stand up and speak for your, 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 your?
My name is Camilla Martin. Um, the address, um, our, my just keep it up to one zero zero five East Side Lane. And that, uh, is my rental, or I have a tenant.
Right?
Yes.
My name is Camilla Martin, and I have a loan at one zero zero five East Side Lane, James Drive. On February thirteenth, two thousand two, my tenant called me because she received a bill in about five hundred dollars for December and January. She called the water company and told that it may, uh, be awarded in the nine and ten years. She was also told that the water bill for January and February of two thousand twenty would be around seven hundred dollars. A full work of a two month, which is what it does is about a hundred dollars. I went over it recently for, um, you know, a, 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 and with my rental. Um, the tenant and I checked all around the house. We checked on the side, outside. I checked all around the house, we checked inside, outside, give up a list, and, um, the house itself had moved, uh, a movement about where she belonged, um, social security room, and that where belongs the washing and dryer. Um, when we went in the back, and the laundry room, um, I opened the door, and the lid was up on the washing machine, and water was just pouring, um, from the water, you know, going into the washing machine, onto the floor of the building at that roof. I called my husband, um, a couple of months ago, he had mentioned that she saw a neighbor in town, and he was very stunned. He has a disability, and he wanted to all the neighborhoods. Uh, I was, police, he's been out of kind of, he's been well over, and, uh, he needs just one kid that he's wanted to go over in a car for the tenant, because she, she worked, and he has a tendency to go into, um, people's things, and he's, he's over there. Their cousin did something that she saw him, and, 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 so. Then I got a call from, uh, heard it to call, and gave down to me somewhere around my six, and they told me, because I'm responsible, I came to school, and they told me that my school bill, um, for the month of December, January, would be around $1,000, it would make dollars for one month. And they said, it said, for, uh, January and February, it would be $1,011 of the dollars, so it's a total of $2,104,000, nine dollars, for two months. And I explained to, I believe it was named, it was Dave, um, and I explained to him what had happened to all four, and told him that stuff was challenging, you know, because I understand that he had a rule, also, um, allowing to just, just, to share, and I said, well, the waterway, I wanted to that go into the school line, uh, the waterway underneath the house, so therefore I could that be allowed in the other line, and, and, um, for, for water, so. And he said, well, I'm sorry, I'm talking about, because, you know, here, I'm sorry to go and ask you for consideration for this action, it was something that, um, well, I did not call the tenant, he called, it was something that, 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 uh, certainly felt immediately, that was, that was good. I, I contacted the mother, so, um, she, you know, saying that, oh, no, I'm sorry about this, he was on, told her that someone did it, so she's in denial, um, I, I have to take her report, if I do, I, you know, the quarter seven days, um, she was, was a person to, to go in.
I don't think that, I think you got one.
Okay, that's it, yeah, okay, thank you, that took so long.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, um, oh.
I'm sorry, I just, I used it a little late, I just want to add three items, um, uh, Nathan Johnson, I'm a resident, you know, I'm a janitor, a public, and all of these people are my friends, and he's six children, he's fairly, so self-killing, 9412. I would say coming involved in the five six, um, I think I already mentioned that if you were, I'm not sure, there was a decision would be in the executive session, about the party next to I don't know, or whatever that decision meant, that this, that those waiting, the ones, you know, I was just suggesting that we would get in touch with the patent pack on the bill that may be demanded, and, you know, get, get some of that stuff, get really tore up the floor and trash, because a lot of it could be used, so that was the first thing I wanted to talk about. The second thing is, this is part of, it's going to be controlled by a fire department or city, or, or whoever comes to that, you know, they won't, uh, the first thing is, uh, they've already informed me about my tax recovery, no, and I thought I was not in agreement with it, uh, for the assessment from the county, I bought my house over 20 something years ago, in Harwood, and when it was reassessed, I was shocked, everyone was, so it was costly, very hard for, for the tax people in there, so I don't agree with, but, uh, my name is...
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion for the executive session to discuss partnership agreements and the ordinance for sale of property, and to receive legal advice, in terms of the appeal from the paralegal, and to the legal officer who, who, uh, too intense, yes, um, talking to people, like, being, like, uh, 454, who are, who are, who are, you know, take, and, um, we need a motion for, like...
What was going on there? Thank you, thank you. Would you help me, um, back, we'll get back to her on, but, but, the, I'll be patient, because she'll know the person.
I don't know the number, I think, I don't know, I think...
Dan, have one more word on that, can we look at, if any of this is true, that we have, because it made the, um, a, um, so, and I don't know if this works, we're going to remove our customers, but I'd be interested in our customers' insurance after, five or three?
Uh, as part of myself, very, I know a lot.
But just maybe another...
What, yeah, I have a letter from the, um, funding company, to say that it was not a leak or anything, certified.
Anything else?
Yes, yes.
I need a copy, okay.
We'll get back, um, I'll...
You want to, um, maybe, maybe, your company, maybe, I'm going to go back, maybe, your company?
I don't think you know, I don't think you know, you know, this.
Right.
Martin, this is my card, it's probably...
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I'm coming out. Thank you, okay.
She's already emotional, I'll make that point, and then, and then, second, if second is feet on, and everybody, and see legal counsel in regard to revenue, and then, and everything.
And I'll be back in a minute.
Okay, cut second, hurry, second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay.
I thought it's paid, it's paid. We're on it.
Yes.
Right, right.
Okay, we're back in session, we made some notes, actually, or notes during the executive session, and now, um, I am, uh, 17, 11, amend, purchase agreement for TMS number 425, 12, DR0298, and TMS 425, 12, DR0185, and, um, we'll have a, um, motion for that?
Thank you. Kidding, it's going to be fast, it's like, okay, can we, uh, discover a vote on that? What's on there?
You just a brown card?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, I remember making ordinance for the sale of TMS number 425, and 12, that's DR0, that's E98, and TMS 425, that's 12, that's DR0, that's 125, I can't read it. All right, more follow-up, please?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, number 19, authorizing for the, 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 the,